Good morning, I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student. Through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners. Who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community this meeting. Possibly is being recorded by W A. The cable TV, but if not, I think Mr. Adams is recording it just in case we need and there's Mrs. Williams. I will admit her. Good morning, Erin. Um, we are order business this morning, this is our Friday morning check in we've been doing every. Every Friday morning. Eight o'clock this morning, but moving forward, it will start earlier at seven thirty. We have call to order opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We have time for public comment. Our administrative items include the COVID I nineteen update phases and models of learning. Status of athletics and then we will adjourn so everybody can. Go on with their day. So I will start by taking a roll call and asking the school committee members if everybody is okay with this usual order of Friday morning business and Mark Terry.
President, yes.
Paul Kendall.
Here, yes.
Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Erin Williams.
And yes.
Thank you. And then I will start by asking if the if there's anybody from the public that would like to share any comments this morning. Okay, and seeing none, we'll start with asking Mr. Adams to give us an update on COVID nineteen in the schools.
Where do I begin?
What a week.
Actually, I begin by saying. To Audrey and Ed whom I've contacted than been in contact more, I think than with my own wife over the past. But um, the the work, you know, last weekend, over the long weekend. Identifying and helping us identify contacts of of potential cases. I don't think people really understand the amount of time and effort this takes. And for the two of them, and I know they have some support, but it's typically just the two of them. Who are trying to track down. Any potential cases that may exist within our community that helps us inform our decisions. As to whether or not school should be in session. And over this weekend was no different Sunday, Monday, there was constant communication. And obviously, the decision we made on Monday night is not something we would typically do in a short order. But we felt it was important. To go remote just for these three days for Tuesday through Friday. For the high school and the middle school while we were able to. Ensure. That a number of students that were identified as as contacts could be tested and have their families notified. And to ensure that the safety of all of our students was taken into consideration and faculty and staff as well. So thank you to them, I'm happy to say that because of that process, as you'll. Hear me say in a little bit, I will be recommending that Monday we go back to our hybrid model at the middle school and the high school based on. The the negative results that that we've been provided by families. And the ability to quarantine those. Individuals within our community. Quickly and efficiently, so we can get back to teaching and learning in the hybrid model. We still know it's not the best model, we want everyone back in all of the time. But it is. It is a model that our teachers and many parents have reached out to me and saying it's great to have them in school, even if it's just two days a week. They're getting some of the the social emotional components, they're getting the connections. Being made with not only classmates, but their educators, so thank you to to Ed and Audrey. And I and I will comment that, you know, Stephen Marks was great, I mean immediately, we we. Closed down all athletics as well for the week, which we said we would do. And so Stephen was right on top of that and communicating to the families and other athletic directors within the TVL. So it was an eventful weekend and typically we try to look at data longitudinally, making sure that that we've got everything in. In order before we make decisions. But you know, this is akin to a snow day where it just all of a sudden popped up and we need to make a quick decision and and because of the support in the. Process we have in place. We were able to do that and and do it as smoothly and efficiently as possible, so. Questions before I share the the dashboard for the week.
Um, I have a question and it's more directed to Ed. So Ed, when this happens in the school, how does that then determine what happens in the rest of the town? Regarding like sports and fields. And specifically, I'm asking on behalf because we had Warren and Mendez open. But then sports for those age groups and were canceled, so I'm just wondering like what is this like sort of. Framework with which you are applying either canceling or not, so that like. As this pops up within the schools, the parents can then know what to expect for sports.
So it's funny, so you know, Erin, you know, we had a long conversation about that. So initially, our thought processes, we were going to close all the fields to any of the rented groups, for example, Ashland Youth Baseball, Ashland Youth Soccer, for example. And then after, so that was the initial thought process and then we kind of reevaluated it late Wednesday. And said, well, you know what, if we've got, if our elementary schools are open. You know, and those kids are technically already together, you know, for example, Ashland Youth Soccer, we'll let them continue to play. But we would cancel it for the middle school and high school age kids. So I think that's the model we're going to go with, but I think each scenario we have to look at a little differently and just see. If we have a lot of families that are involved and the other piece that I really want to look at the next, if this happens again is. What's the potential, like, for example, if we if it's a middle school issue, how many siblings could we possibly have at the elementary level and then maybe just make it across the board?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I'm just gonna share my screen here. So as you can tell, in which you probably. Were fully expecting, our numbers increased this week. Pretty dramatically and you know. When looking at the data, I mean, currently as of yesterday morning, remember how we do our data, this is the state number, the six point six six. We currently have fifteen open cases, is that still correct as of this morning, Ed? This was as of yesterday, so.
Yeah, we we did get two more in last night.
Okay. So. Our positive, our our incident rate is four point eight one as again, remember the state goes from Saturday to Sunday. And ours numbers go through seven o'clock on Thursday morning, so 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 we have some folks that are coming off the rolls, if you will. And and but we've added some that the state didn't have as well, so you know, in this instance, we're still looking at. Being in based on the numbers, being in the hybrid model. But if using just the state number, we're very close to the to having to look at the remote in the red, if you notice on the dashboard from the. The state, we're in the high yellow again, right? We've been in green for two weeks and then we went right into the yellow. And that's partly because of. Number of cases we had in town and they don't all relate to the schools, and I think that's why we have this meeting. And of the nine cases, I think, Ed, you said six, well, excuse me, of of the thirteen. Over time, six are in two households. And then the others are split up across the the community. So you know, I I'm comfortable based on and talking to Ed and Audrey, I'm comfortable with how we've handled the situation, so going back. To the hybrid model Monday is something that, you know, I believe the school committee should consider. And the only other piece I would ask about. Again, athletics would not do anything until next weekend, Stephen moved everything, we do have the PSATs. Scheduled for tomorrow at at the high school, I can tell you, I went up yesterday and it's all set up. In in the gymnasium, there's about a hundred, hundred kids that have to come in, hundred plus that have to take the PSAT. If we push it off and it, the next possible date is not until January and I'll be very frank. I'm not quite sure what January is going to look like for us. That Corey McGann, who is. In charge of running this is very, very thoughtful about the desk and keeping them far enough, more than six feet apart. They've got barcodes, they're using the the lunch, the tables that they're the desk that they've been using at lunch. So they can do any tracing, if there are any students who have been impacted through this week. They're they're not attending. So I feel very comfortable allowing Corey to continue with with having the PSATs, but they have to make a decision this morning. To allow families enough time. But the protocols that he's put in place, I'm very comfortable with.
So Jim, do you need a vote from us or just consensus on that?
Consensus is is fine, Paul, you know, I I, like I said, I just changed the model like a snow day for the first couple. You know, for these three days.
So so I have a, just a question on those things, so. I mean, so do to go back to Monday, the reason you made that choice is a lack of full information, right? It wasn't because we had full information, we made a choice. And so it was out of abundance of caution.
That is absolutely correct.
What we're hearing now is that Ed, Audrey and and the team has completed their contact tracing, now we have. Full information and based on what they've been able to determine. We have been able to complete that contact tracing and believe it's safe to move. Back into our normal hybrid model.
I would say that is correct, except we are waiting on a couple more, but but we feel comfortable or that at this point, based on what we've done. That we've identified, even you know, even some scenarios, we've got people we've identified. That have not been even in our buildings for at least. Well, almost thirteen days already, based on last week. If you use last Monday, a student may not have come to school Monday or Tuesday and they're in the initial cohort while we shut down. The middle and high school for the week, therefore, they still haven't been in. But you know, we, you know. There's still work to do, Paul, I wouldn't say it's all a hundred percent accurate. We're still waiting on on, I think, two results, maybe a couple more, so.
But you haven't, you have enough information about.
Correct.
Yeah. Right, so my questions are around. So from that perspective, I don't, I personally wouldn't see an issue with moving forward with the PSATs. But I ask, I have a question for you and Ed relative to now that we have a certain. Number of students or families that have to quarantine. We've had sister communities that have had issues around people that are supposed to be quarantining. They don't quarantine, right, and they go off and do some, I don't know. Less than intelligent things. So. A couple of things, one from a just a similar situation to that town where. Ed, is there anything that you already do or that we can do to check in to see? And try to be proactive about making sure that people that are supposed to be quarantining are doing that outside of the schools, right? Because that's that's the challenge that the other community had is that students that were supposed to be quarantining. Went to a party, they couldn't figure out who was at the party and so the schools had to make a decision, right? So so is that, and then Jim, from your perspective. Are we allowed and do the administrators and people in the school have enough information to be able to make sure that. They're not also coming to school?
I will add answer the other piece, but the answer is yes to the question posed to me. We are, we are in absolute contact with principals. And the understanding of 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 what we need to be doing.
So so if one of those people decided, hey, I'm I'm getting dropped off at school today, I'm I walk through the doors, somebody's gonna flag that.
I can tell you straight up, the answer is yes, because Ms. LaCroy dealt with it last week very swiftly.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, and I can address some, you know, obviously, you know, in the world of social media, I find out a lot of things quickly. And people are very quick to call me, we had a scenario where someone that was supposed to be quarantined was out and about and. I was on the phone very quickly with those parents and got him back in and. But again, we're we're on top of it, I mean, can it be a hundred percent? No, but we are. We're we're doing, I think we're doing an excellent job and 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 the other thing, Paul, you know, it's really interesting is. I I, we've got to be doing something right, because we're now getting, I'm getting calls from other towns asking, how are you doing that? How are you doing this and? I had two other towns come visit me yesterday to see how we were doing some stuff.
Yeah, no, I I know you're doing a great job and so it just wanted to ensure we're covering the basis that we know have occurred nearby, so.
Yeah. And excuse me, before. Before we move on to anyone else's comments, I I I do need to emphasize that there's, there's been no spreading in the schools, right? I mean, I think it's critically important to understand that our process and protocols that we've put in place have. Have ensured that that we're not, there's no spreading that's occurring within the Ashland Public Schools, this has happened outside of our schools. We catch wind of it and then we act and and appropriately as it, so it does not impact our students in our our community of educators and.
Right, but people do need to understand that what they are doing outside of school can impact whether or not we can have school, because. Direct question from parents this week, why are we out if we're doing so well in school? Why can't we just keep going, you guys doing a great, are doing a great job and there has been no evidence of a problem, so explain to me why we're out. And the reason is because that community behavior does have a direct impact on how it can possibly spread in school, it has, you know. We're we're responsible for the safety of our educators and their comfort level coming into the building. If they know that people are out there not following the same guidelines that the rest of us are trying to follow so that we can keep doing this, so I think. While we're doing a great job in school, I think the the connection between the outside behavior and the inside behavior has to be emphasized.
Yeah, and and that community I mentioned that the the reason they shut down was that outside of school behavior, so.
Right, but it does have an impact on, the two are not disconnected. As as far as I can tell, I mean, that's why we couldn't have school this week. Because outside behavior went a little too far and impacted too many people and we needed to take some time to understand the full extent of it. But the fact that we're doing great in school is 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 wonderful, but it only works if we're also doing great outside of school, I think.
And and Lori, to your point, I guess I have a question for Ed as far as community behavior. How many degrees, six degrees of Kevin Bacon, do you need to be away from a person being tested where you're quarantining?
So so are you talking about like if we quarantine somebody in their house, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so I'll I'll even give you examples, so we have friends that child was sent home with, sorry, Gus, runny nose. So then family of four is asked to be attested. Um, one of the children had been at my, it's one of the only children that's been in my house. And. There was no symptoms of that child. But the whole family was quarantined and they had been in our house in the last fourteen days, so like. Then nobody told us to quarantine. And should we, based on a friend getting tested, like how how many steps away from?
Yeah.
A potential, should, how should the community be behaving?
So so first of all, so the positive person is isolated. And then any of those close contacts, so you know, within the six feet for greater than fifteen minutes, they are, those are the people that get quarantined. But a contact of a contact at this point does not need to be quarantined. And and again, and we always tell people to, i- if you have any symptoms at all, even before you're tested. You should be treating yourself as as if you're positive. You know. So if a family member is sick at home. Until they're tested, they should deem themselves potentially positive. And then any of their close contacts in that family should really quarantine until that initial person is tested.
And maybe it would be helpful also if you could differentiate between isolated and quarantined, because those are different things, I think might be helpful for people to understand the difference.
Sure, so if you if you end up testing positive, you are isolated. And isolation means you're in a room. We know a separate area of the house, if possible, so for example, if you've got a, you know, if you've got your own bedroom, you're going to be in your bedroom. If you've got more than one bathroom in your house, the the person that's positive will use that bathroom, everybody else will use the other bathroom. Food should be brought to the room. If for any reason that person has to come out of the room for any reason, one for one reason or another, they should have a mask on, everybody else should have a mask on. It's it's really limiting any potential exposure. The people that are quarantined in a house, you know, that's that's fourteen days. From your last day of contact with the positive person. That's when that fourteen day period starts and and when we say quarantine, you're you're staying in your house. I mean, obviously, you can go in your backyard, your front yard, not leaving, because you have the potential, if you've been a close contact, to test positive. For up to fourteen days and our other big concern is, we do know, and especially Audrey and I, we've seen this across the board. Most of the people under the age of twenty one have no symptoms. Compared to the older people that have a lot of the symptoms, so a lot of these close contacts that we've quarantined, we're quarantining for a reason. They may never have symptoms, but then could become positive.
I I guess I just, I wanted to make a couple of comments, me first. Why is the background noise loud, there's a garbage truck coming by. First, I want to thank Ed, you particularly acknowledged you when we had our Wednesday meeting, but you weren't on the call. And I should share with others that my son was one of the people who was a close contact, fortunately tested negative, but. You know, you were probably on the phone with me five times on, I think it was Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, I don't remember what day it was. And I can only imagine when you're doing that twenty times over, how challenging that is, so. Again, want to acknowledge you, thank you for that, but also thank you, Jim, you, Ed, Audrey, all of you. Were involved in making the decision that you did this week, I think it was the right decision. You know, given the amount of information you had, that it was important to make sure that that there wasn't more spread than there was. And obviously now have a a little bit of better sense of it. So I I want to thank all of you for all the time you put in and the thoughtfulness that that went with the decision making. I also was thinking that it probably is, had one of the things we can reflect on now and realize that the. Hybrid model that we selected of having different cohorts in two days a week, rather than, for example, week on, week off. Is turning out to be a positive here and that the number of days in school kids are meeting of missing. Is is relatively balanced, rather than having one cohort out for a whole week and another one having no impact. I think that maintains connection. The other thing I wanted to just ask, and I don't know if you have to put the. The dashboard back up, Jim, but I saw that there were, I was looking at the ages of the positive tests. Thank you. And seeing on on ten, six and ten, seven. You know, we've got a couple of fourteen year olds there, you know, that's kind of the age range we're dealing with. But then there's another one that doesn't show up until the thirteenth and I'm wondering whether or not those cases are connected. And it was just a long time till the test was done in the secondly, one on the thirteenth, where those are completely separate. Sort of points of origin. Now, if you can speak to that, Ed.
Audrey, you might have to help me here, do you have the spreadsheet up, Audrey of? I just don't remember the dates of when some, and and you know, just enough, just FYI to, you know, we we've had a couple of cases. Where the students do not go to Ashley and schools also in these age groups, Audrey. Are the fourteen year olds, is that the two from the other district, the other school?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're they're non district kids.
The ones on thirteenth. So it's probably a separate, separate contact altogether.
Yeah.
Thank you, just wanted to get a sense of whether we were seeing a perpetuation down the line of it being asked or it just happened to be another fourteen year old.
Yeah.
And and I guess the last thing I have to say, Jim, in terms of your question about the SAT. Yeah, I I like Paul, I'm comfortable with that going forward, PSAT is tenth graders or eleventh graders? Commuted, Jim.
Tenth.
Yeah.
But is it eleventh, Kelly? PSATs?
Yeah, it's just eleventh graders this year. Some tenth graders take it as well, but it's only eleventh is available.
Okay.
So I mean, I think that also, you know, it's it's not to say that there's a crossover on some of our kids, but it seems that the the close contacts. Have largely been in the the ninth grade cohort rather than the eleventh grade, which I think means that there's a lesser risk associated with. Those two PSAT among a hundred, hundred juniors. So I'm supportive of that going forward.
Is a hundred and thirty taking the test.
You have Mr. McGann right there, do you?
I do, that's why I'm wearing my mask.
Good.
Lori.
Feeling high.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I would agree, I'm fine with the PSATs going forward, fine with the hybrid. Return on Monday.
Yeah.
Jim, the only thing on the in the dashboard itself, you've got the green overlaid with the yellow and I think per metrics, it's all yellow this week.
Yeah, yeah, I'll change that, thank you.
Just before we publish, and then as far as play for athletics, I it seems like if everything is not until next weekend. We will have another discussion before play resumes and don't even need to make a choice, right?
That's correct, they can practice, is all we're saying, starting, you know, once we go back into our normal model, they would start practicing again.
And just a word about process, because I did also get this parent question this week. Because we are doing these Friday morning meetings and because we have. Set up some metrics and then have taken the extra step to really break it down and see what's going on directly in Ashland. And I know we've said at 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 these meetings multiple times that the metrics are a guide and this is nuanced and there are going to be a lot more. Factors involved in any decision that we make. But that doesn't mean that things aren't going to come up during the week like they did this time outside of a meeting. That where the school committee is not making the decision, but we are trusting Mr. Adams. And the COVID task force, Audrey, Ed and whomever else they need to talk with Stephen. To, they're charged with keeping everybody safe and making decisions like Mr. Adam said, I mean, it's a whole different situations, but similar to a snow day. They're going to be, you know, situations that need to be addressed immediately and aren't going to be waiting for our Friday meeting. So the fact that we have these metrics that we're using and they've been very useful in our discussions, it does not prohibit. The administrators from making decisions that they need to make during the week. That are directly related to safety and certainly the the school committee can always have an emergency meeting if we need to, but I think there was. You know, there were some questions about, you know, how how is it possible for that decision to be made outside of your meeting, outside of the metrics? And I just wanted to do a little bit of explaining and if anybody else has anything they want to add to that, please feel free.
No, I think you said it, Lori, and we've. I've probably said it the most out of everybody, right, the the metrics are a data point, they're not what we use to determine it, we could have. Twenty people inside of one assisted living building and that would blow up our metrics and we still wouldn't, you know, change what we're doing, so. And and to your to your other point that you made, that's what I was going to say. Just because Jim made it without us having a meeting, we could have held an emergency meeting. And done the same exact thing and we would have done the same exact thing, so. At some point, people just want to vent, I think, and.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's fair that they they understand the process and it's not sort of as as cut and dry as that, especially. Considering that we're dealing with a pandemic, every situation, I'm sure Ed and Audrey can talk to this, I mean, there are. Different factors that come up with with the cases and the contact tracing probably involves some, you know. Complicated issues when you can't get in touch with people or whatever, I mean, one, one thing that I that I said is that. You know, there's going to be information that we don't all have access to about what's actually going on personally with with the people that are infected. And you know, we need to trust that the people that are recommending recommending that we take a step back for the purposes of safety. Might have some access to information that we don't know yet. Or at least they're giving themselves the time to make sure that everything is safe before we reengage. So um, I, I just wanted to address that because it definitely was brought to my attention as a parent concern and it's fair enough. And, and then that is why, uh, and then that will continue to, to happen this way because the way that this is working, you know, the information, people just don't get sick on Tuesday or Friday or whatever, you know, when the, when things come up, that's when we're going to have to address them. And sometimes it's going to involve maybe a, a quick action one way or the other as far as school's concerned.
Yeah, Lori, I don't, I don't see this as honestly any different than any number of other scenarios that come up that cause building administrators or administration through Jim to close a building. You know, I mean, Jimmy is the example of a snow day, which I think is an appropriate example. But I think we've had circumstances where the power is out. Um, we've had circumstances probably where um, there've been some threats to, show the threat to safety somewhere along the way. Um, we've probably had water main breaks that have caused this loss of water to a building. And all those things, you know, our administrative decisions, that we still have the, our calendar says we're open. Um, but we make a decision. We trust our administrators to make a decision um, of what to do based on circumstances that arise that are really kind of building based decisions. And I think, you know, given the circumstances here, we're talking about two buildings, right? We talked about the middle school and the high school. Administration talked about those. Um, this is not a policy level decision where we're going to change the way we do things and as we've already hit the point of the metrics being a guide. So you know, I, I think that's the way it should operate. And I guess it sort of relates to that. I want to go back to what Erin made a minute ago about athletics. That, you know, my view is that our baseline is athletics are running forward as long as schools open. That's what I think we voted on. And if there's something that comes up along the way like this, um, that causes us through administration again to make a different decision. Or if there's a judgment made that, that the community we're playing against has a high rate of spread that um, Stephen's like, look, I'll let our kids practice this week, but I'm not letting them play against town X because town X has a positivity rate of twenty-seven. Um, you know, to me, those are again, those are administrative decisions and I, I guess I think about it as, I think it's appropriate for us to vote to reopen the schools, but I don't want that to be tantamount to you should be voting either close schools or get into the administrative decision of what's going to happen with athletics specifically. I think we've already tied athletics to being open. That's the way it was administered this week, um, appropriately so, in my view. Um, you know, so I think that, that's kind of the way I see us making these decisions going forward. Um, I don't know if anybody sees it differently, but um, so I, I guess I'd make a motion to resume hybrid model effective Monday.
Second.
All in favor, Erin?
I.
Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. That passes, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm good with the PSATs too, Jim.
Anything else that we need to discuss this morning? You're muted.
My dog again, I tried to mute one. So uh, no, I think we're all good this week and hopefully we can have a quiet weekend and Audrey and Ed can get a little rest.
Uh, Audrey's husband saw me yesterday at the middle school and he told me that I get to talk to his wife more than he.
Right, I know, that's how it goes.
It's been a theme this morning.
It is what it is.
Wow, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Dedication.
Thank you.
For your time and your expertise and, and all you're doing for Ashland. We really appreciate all of you very much. And everybody have a nice day and have a nice weekend. I'll take a motion to adjourn whenever.
So moved.
All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
You.
Hi.
I, have a good day, everybody.
Hi Barbara and Margaret. Hi, everybody.
Joining us.
I see you all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.